Good evening. Let me call the Richland County Council redistricting work session to order. First item before is adoption of the agenda, challenging motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
It's moving properly second. Ms. Owen, can you call the roll for the motion to adopt the agenda?
Malinowski.
Yeah, I was waiting for the roll call first.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Malinowski. Give me the roll call first.
Malinowski.
Here.
Q. McBride.
President.
Livingston.
Here.
Horatio. Joe Walker.
Joe Walker.
Barron.
Barron.
Overture Walker.
Overture Walker.
President.
English.
English.
Newton.
Newton.
Mackey.
Mackey.
Here.
Here.
Moving properly second for the adoption of the agenda. There are no questions about adoption of the agenda. Can you call the roll?
Malinowski.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Let me just quickly say the purpose for this meeting is for us to get some information regarding redistricting, get some idea of the issues and challenges that we'll face with redistricting, as well as for council members to get a clear understanding of what's involved in the process, looking at the benchmark report in terms of those goals and objectives we need to meet in terms of establishing our plan, as well as gets the legal description of what we need to do from a legal perspective, as well as try to come up with some kind of a timeframe in terms of getting it done and being able to get this completed in time for the 2022 elections. I know Mr. Our attorney will be talking a little bit about some legal aspects of it, as well as Mr. Brown and staff who will be working with the plan itself in terms of relying on council input and so forth through our GIS system, where we have the map, where we have to set up the maps and the software to do what we need to do to draw our district lines. And we have this effort, I know who's working with that, you know, GIS area. So we're going to start by just getting some general information about redistricting and talk a little bit about the benchmark report and things we expected to do. That's provided by us from Public Affairs, SEM, Public Affairs, Policy Affairs, I'm sorry. Mr. Brown, I think there may have been someone perhaps from Fiscal Affairs Affairs that may want to present this benchmark report to us.
Me today is Mr. Adam DeMars, Ms. Mary Catherine Miller, and Ms. Catherine Kelly as well. We're just going to go over the benchmark report. We hope that you've had some time to review this information. It is a lot of information, but it is very important in regards to the redistricting process. Currently, Revenue and Fiscal Affairs is working with 35 counties and 17 municipalities and special purpose districts throughout the redistricting process. Some of these entities that have been using us have been using their own GIS staff and just using us for a more consulting role. Others have asked us to assist with the entire procedure. If you have the benchmark report, if you would turn to page two, I will just be going over some of the constitutional and statutory requirements as it pertains to redistricting. I believe we're going to share the screen. Can everybody see the screen? Okay, I'll just start with the constitutional and statutory requirements. Fourteenth Amendment is one person, one vote, and this is the equal protection clause. Pretty much what this means in a nutshell is if you have one district with 100 people in it and another district that has 200 persons in it, that district that has 100 persons in it is going to have more of a voice than the district with the 200 people in it. So the purpose of redistricting is to balance this out. So with redistricting, you can balance it to the 150 persons per each district, and then each person is one person, one vote. Another thing to note is that race is a factor in redistricting, but it cannot be the predominant factor in redistricting. Another thing to note is Section 2 of the Voters' Rights Act, and that is the protection of racial minority groups. Some of you may have been here during the last redistricting cycle in 2010, and you may remember Section 5 of DOJ preclearance. That was when you submitted your plan up to DOJ, and they would give you either a thumbs up or a thumbs down on that plan. South Carolina is no longer under Section 5 of DOJ preclearance, so your burden is going to be more on your council with this in respect to that Section 5. Section 5 was deemed unconstitutional. The plan needs to be finalized before the filing date, and this is going to require public input. Public input is very important in the process of redistricting, and it will also require three readings. Next, also on page two, we're going to go over some traditional redistricting principles. These are that districts must be drawn continuously. You can't draw a district and then hop another district and put the same district over. It has to touch. That's your continuity factor. You must, another thing that we look out for is the minimization of splitting of voting precincts. We are aware that in certain cases, voting precincts will be split, but we try to minimize that as much as possible. It causes a burden for both voters' registration offices as well as the voters themselves. Causes a little bit of confusion. Another principle is that districts must be geographically compact. They must be able to pass an eye test. You don't want a district that has all sorts of forks off of it and is elongated. It needs to be compact. It needs to, you need to be able to look at it and say, this looks compact enough. It's passed as an eye test. Another focus is going to be on communities of interest. We are looking for council to define these communities. Communities of interest can be anything from a school zone, a neighborhood, a school district. Any cohesive community could be considered a community of interest. And then the last principle is taking into account any of the court decisions that have to do with redistricting or any federal and state laws. If you turn to page three, we will now break down some of the population counts by district. Richland County does include a prison. This prison, total population, including the prison population, has increased 8.23% from 384,504 persons to 416,147 persons. RFA is suggesting removing this prison population due to recent court decisions, and this is to better reflect the one person, one vote criteria. Right now, the total prison population in Richland County is 4,936 persons. If you look at table one, you can see the note of population of 4,963 housed at various state prisons in Richland County have been removed for this analysis. If you take your total population of your county and then you divide it by the number of districts, this is going to give you your goal population. So right now, the goal population per district is 37,383 persons per district. Your high district there is District 9, which is over by 6,771 persons, and that gives you an 18.11% deviation. Your low is District 4, and that's going to be under by 7,582 persons, which gives you a negative 20.28% deviation. If you take this high and this low deviation and you combine them, you get the 38.39% deviation range. RFA is recommending a range of 5%, and that is 2.5% above or 2.5% below. That gives you your total deviation range of 5%. However, there is some room for any adjustment there. Anything that is over 10%, that would be 5% over, 5% under. Anything over that would be considered noncompliant. So you do have some room to work there. It's just what council recommends at the end of the day, what kind of risk you're willing to take.
Mr. Chair.
Next page of the.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Quick question. I didn't hear one of the words that you said. And so you said, looking at something that was either 10% above or below, you said that would be considered, did you say noncompliant?
Anything above 10% is noncompliant, and that means a positive 5% deviation to a negative 5% deviation. And that gives you a total.
I just didn't hear the word.
Yes. So then on the next page, we have a map of the current Richland County benchmark. We have received all of the incumbents' addresses and plugged those into the map to make sure that everybody is in their proper district, and everybody is as they should be. And we, PO boxes were not used in this report. These are all physical addresses. And this is used to make sure that we preserve cores of districts through the redistricting process. Now, on pages six and seven, we are going into the breakdown of the demographic information provided by the Census Bureau. These are broken down into different racial fields. These would be Hispanic, non-Hispanic white, non-Hispanic DOJ black, and non-Hispanic other. One item to note is that the percentage of the population for any majority-minority districts, you want these percentages to remain relatively close, and this is to avoid any packing or cracking concerns, which may be a cause for a voting dilution claim. If you go to page seven, we have more statistical analysis, and these are broken down the same racial fields just by voting age, population categories. Are there any questions on any of those?
Yes.
Yes.
For the. Okay, yes. For the percentage of non-Hispanic, you said DOJ, so I guess that's the Department of Justice?
That is correct. We use the DOJ definitions in the racial fields.
So are you using these numbers as the numbers that we have based on, I guess, the lawsuit back then? Or how, why is it that we have DOJ?
This would be based on 2020 census counts. And the guidelines adopted.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you laugh.
And it's the DOJ guidelines adopted.
Okay, I was wondering, because we just had DOJ in reference to the number of blacks, and that's why I was, I was trying to find out, was there a particular reason for that?
They should all be DOJ, correct?
They are all.
They are, they are all DOJ. It's, that one is just labeled DOJ on that. Are there any other questions?
I just have one population question. Do we include anything from Fort Jackson?
That is true. I believe, I believe it. I believe we did.
Question is, how do we treat Fort Jackson population?
Yes, I believe we did in this report.
So that would be in your numbers?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. One question from earlier. You mentioned that in your recommendations, you were not recommending that we count the prison population as part of our planning for redistricting. Would you happen to know whether or not that was done in 2010?
Was a part, was a part of the 2010 redistricting processes. I don't believe.
I'm sorry, if you're answering my question, I can't hear you. I can't tell if you're speaking among yourselves or to us.
We're speaking among ourselves. Standby one second, please.
Okay, thank you.
But I could, I could answer that. The answer is yes.
Right. The answer to that is yes.
Yeah, I, I do not believe. I do not believe it was a requirement in 2010, but I do not have that information in front of me at this time.
I believe it was counted in 2010, and I think even for the U.S. Census Bureau, its current policy is to count the prison population. We don't have to, but it is the policy of the Census Bureau too.
When you say the policy of the Census Bureau to count the prison population, are you saying it's the policy to count them for census purposes because they are residents who live in our community? Or are you saying it's the policy to count them as part of the population that is considered for redistricting?
It would be part of the population counted for the census. When it comes to redistricting, it would not.
Thank you.
It's the choice of the council whether they want to or not.
That is correct.
Is it not true that you said, in reference to the Physical Affairs Department, in your, in your documentation, it says recommended?
It's recommended not to include the prison population.
All right, that's what I'm saying.
Because they are nonvoting. Yes.
Going back, Mr. Chair. We're going back and forth, but in this report, it states that it would be left up to the discretion of the county whether to include prison population or not. Is that not correct, sir?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one more question. So are these numbers listed, does it include the prison population? No, they recommend not to, and these numbers aren't. So if we did, then they need to provide new numbers, is what you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Go ahead, Adam.
Are there any more questions?
Oh, you may proceed.
All right. Hearing none. In conclusion, RFA requests council to conduct public meetings to discuss these reports and also receive input from the public. Like we said, that is a very big thing in this redistricting process, is receiving any input from the public. Also, adopt the resolution and acceptance of this plan following the traditional principles. That is continuity, avoiding splitting of voting precincts, compactness of districts to a practical extent, and passing an eye test, comply with federal and state law, and then being drawn in respect to any communities of interest. And that is it.
Back with Lisa.
If I have one question regarding, I think it's on page one, redistricting report 2020 presented to Richland County, and it has items to note prior to reviewing this report. And on the third dash.
Yes.
Was there a mistake in, in terms of looking in tables? If you look at that last sentence, could you please explain that one to me? The last sentence is the third dash, the last sentence. If I need to read it, are you fine?
Which one are you referencing? That would be great if you could.
Okay, it's there on page one, and it's items to note prior to reviewing this report.
Yes.
And there are three dashes. It's the third dash, and it's the last sentence. It says in tables two and three, NH DOJ black is the sum of non-Hispanic black and non. NH DOJ black is the sum of non Hispanic black and non.
Black, white, whatever in that particular district, so it's kind of easy for you to go in there with the factors and she, and you would say, Miss Etheridge, what happens if that's not there? What happens if that goes there, whatever, and you get to immediately see the results of that.
Does it do the voting precincts too, like how they talked about not breaking up voting precincts?
Right, yeah.
Does it do that?
The lines are there, you know, you'll know whether you got a whole precinct or a part of a precinct in most instances.
I'd have set up to manipulate the numbers, so it's not like we used to have to count.
No, we won't manipulate, we'll just.
It's, it's set up too.
We'll just be drawing.
Right, just don't take what you draw.
Let me, let me withdraw that comment, I've been saying that we won't have to, we just put the numbers in and the machine, and it will calculate.
Yeah, we will, we will just be selecting areas.
The area.
And the area will be added to the area that that we have, that we're working with at that time.
Yeah, I used the wrong terminology. Um, I was talking about the calculations and I won't put in it. Uh, I think what um Attorney Wright said was that they, we would be able to do a comparison then to make sure that we're looking at all of our numbers. And that was the, the point that he was making, and I like to look at data to compare it to see what, which is better for the whole county. So and I think that was the point that was being made there.
Right, the, the, the software will give you the same kind of chart that you look, that you have in front of you from DOJ, I mean from. From the um Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Department. It'll give you the same breakdown with the racial breakdown and the population.
I, I don't know whether anybody can, I'm.
Excuse me.
I don't know if anyone can answer this, we have, this was done in twenty twenty. So there are a number of districts, not one of mine, but a number of districts, they have a number of um. Multi-unit complexes that are going up uh within the next year, so it would be lots of people in there. The, the census didn't take that into consideration, so we just have to wait for ten years to look at that again.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Now, if they were, if they were being built, we got them in for the count, and they were able, if they were, if they were there brand new in twenty twenty. When the census um count was done, they'll be in there. But anything after that, it won't be in this, in the twenty twenty census.
If they were there and someone, we had people living in them, then they would count it, otherwise it's not.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I ask this question the best that I can, and if it's too convoluted, I can get my answer later. I understand what you're saying about the software handling the math that we need. So that our districts comply with the state guidelines. I guess my question is. Considering that some districts are going to have to gain population, and some districts are going to have to lose population. How does that process work? Because if, if I'm in my area and I say, I don't want to, I, I can't have this neighborhood anymore because it would make me over. Then that means it has to go to somebody else, so how does it determine who that goes to? It, it almost seems like a chain reaction, so I'm trying to figure out how that works. Does that, does that make sense what I'm saying? Because if, if I say this, I don't, this, this won't work geographically, but this area is too many for me, so I want to give it to Bill. But Bill might say, well, this, this area doesn't work because it's not contiguous with voting precincts or what have you. Does that make sense?
It ends up being a, a lot of shifting around.
Okay.
Like you said, if yours is over, let's see, you are.
Eleven.
You're.
I'm almost just right for the record.
Yeah, you, you really are, yours didn't change much. But um like Mr. Malinowski, he's, he's five thousand over.
Right.
He would have, either have to add it to two or. But if, see, and then if I added the two. Two, yeah, that's what I'm saying, two will be way over, but two also touches eight and nine, and they're over and under.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying, it's, it's a chain reaction, so how, how does that, how does that juggling work? Because we can sit down and have a perfect conversation, but then make it imperfect for another council member.
I just say, everybody's not gonna be happy.
Oh, okay.
That's the process.
Gotcha, thank you.
You know what, and um, and unfortunately with real proportion, um nobody's district is just right. And I, and I, I, I mean that literally, because what happens is, you know, just because you, the domino effect you're talking about. Because if, if somebody next to you can't get in a population contiguous um, um somewhere else. Then they may have to bump some of your population, you may have to get some from somewhere else, even, even if you set that, that ideal number. So there is no, there is no right size um district. Um, it, 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 it's for folks to really understand, because sometimes you'd have a council member who'd have a district who said, I'm within that variance, y'all leave me alone, that's not possible most of the time. So we have to keep that consideration too. One of the things that, 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 that have worked um is. Having each individual to go down to the G I S and understand. Their district and what happens, in other words, if you need, if you need more, you can just simply uh work with the effort to say, what happens if this, if, if I did this and this and that? So you get an idea for the different parameters and possibilities surrounding your district. And once everybody do that, what has to happen is. You, 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 you have to draw a map o, o, on, uh, two, two maps or three maps based on that conversation. And all, and, and councilmen would just have to vote on it, because eleven members can't go ahead and make a map.
And, and that's part of the reason why I asked if we as a body, we're gonna, we're gonna set what the variance is, because if you look at my case, and I heard you loud and clear. About my number, I, I heard you, I heard you. But if, if you look in my case, I don't, I don't, at this point, I don't need any numbers or need to take away any numbers, but I know that I will. But that, that target has to be set so that my meeting can make sense, so that's all, thank you. Mr. Chair.
And I, I'm just gonna ask the question because I'm not sure who it's directed to. Um, but what is our timeframe in completing this now that we have the information?
I asked Mr. Wright to look in from a legal perspective, procedure perspective, to look into um, um our timeframe, to help us work on a schedule and get this done. Uh, Mr. Wright, you want to speak to that?
Right. Well, it has to be done before the. Before it's, everything is open for candidates for the November election, which is March sixteenth, but they'll be published. Um, March first, so it needs to be done before March first or by March first. So really, if we really want to make sure it's done in time, uh we, I talked with Mr. Brown too, and we think that the, probably the best date is to. Have the third reading done by February eighth. And. And the thing is, we all, because it has to be three readings, it, it has to be three readings and it has to be a public hearing. So we have to have all, those four things tasked to happen beforehand.
So what's the step backing up for that then, um, you know?
So the first reading needs to be, if possible, December probably.
And the public meetings should happen before that.
Or we could have meetings in January.
Right. And you have to have the public hearing.
You know, December seventh and fourteen. And I'm sorry, thank you.
I just wanted to add from, as you were Paul, from previous experience with this, that uh Ms. Etheridge and Ms. Carter last time really were. Uh, the, the main folks that helped us all get through this. And when you go down there, regardless of how much you maybe want to keep an area, don't fight them too much like I did. But uh, let, let them, let them guide you, because in the long run, they really know what they're doing, and they'll make it go a lot easier and get it done a lot quicker. That's all, thank you.
Right.
I'll just make a general statement, because I think it is ridiculous, and I understand that we have these mandates and dates to meet. That we have such a short time to deliberate and, and make decisions on this. And um, is this always the case that the time is so short, or is there not any laws that require us to get this information at a certain time?
Well, the, the data was delayed because of COVID nineteen. Uh, normally, the, the year after the census is taken, the data is available in March or April of that year. This year, they did not release the data until September, so everybody's behind the curve.
Oh, then when they released the data, who did they give the data to, Ms. Etheridge?
The, the state. The state, well, it's, it's online, and you can download it yourself, but the, the. Revenue, Revenue and Fiscal Affairs has the data. And like I said, we, we go online and download the data from the Census Bureau. But it, it's not available, it wasn't available until like September fifteenth, I think, of this year. And like I said, it normally is available in March of the year after the census is taken.
So the census and every, everything was thrown off in the process and other time?
Yes, yes, ma'am, and, and like I said, everybody's fighting the same deadline.
Eight. December.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Here.
From, from a process, you know, next step process, I think it's important for um. Council members um to um, with a kind of a schedule, to have in, in individual meetings with the G I S staff who's working on this. To get a, get an idea of um, you know, what, what, what are the consequences of different things and the impact um, on, on various districts, so at least they have a general idea of what that, what that is. How do you get? Give me now? Okay, to get an idea of what your expectations are and so forth, and, 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 and log that in. Now, it is true that if, if, if we'll be accurate about it, um it would be helpful if we had at least two questions answered, and that is. Uh, whether or not we want to include, including the prison population, and also um whether or not um we need to go with the, with the, the um ten percent variance. And I would say, based on our numbers, uh it's gonna be difficult for us to, really a severe challenge if we try to say within the five percent. And the law allows to do the ten percent, because what, what that mean is you, you have to do a whole lot more change.
So um if we do the ten percent, Ms. Ms. Etheridge, then these numbers here would change, would they not? For the deviation and all, we take down, we take down the over and under, we do the ten percent deviation, it wouldn't, would, would it affect that at all?
Well, see, this, the chart that you have here, um are you looking at page three of eight?
Yes.
Okay, that, that number is the census, the way it says twenty twenty census.
Mm-hmm.
That's the number that you have in your district now. The goal is that thirty seven, three eighty-three. So everybody has to adjust, if you have more, you have to go lower. If you have less, you have to pull in more from somebody else. That's, so it, it's gonna bring that deviation number down to the, to the ten to five percent.
Yeah, so would that, that make a difference in the number, we have to switch the under and over? If we move the deviation to, to, uh, to the ten percent?
Yeah, the, the answer, the answer, the answer is yes, because I think what, what she's saying is, if, if, if you gotta have thirty, if you gotta have thirty seven thousand. And, and, and if the deviation is ten versus five, that mean you can go further beyond thirty seven than your number would have, than you could with five percent.
Yeah.
I don't know about the ten percent above, I, I'm still trying to deal with that, so maybe we need to have a one-on-one.
Okay.
Because I'm not dealing quite well with the ten percent.
Etheridge, one thing would be helpful is, it, one, it's kind of something that you can do, is just simply, you know. If a district is thirty seven, you can usually show the difference between um a five percent variance and a ten percent variance in terms of what that range would be.
Uh, so um, you, you got a follow-up?
I, I do.
You're, you're. No, you're not, wait, I'm sorry, I'm not finished.
So, from my information, and I know this is. I don't want to say it's squishy math, but we have to be flexible with a lot of this to make this work, but in the past. Did we use one standard deviation for every district, or did we use a range where we said you can deviate between X percent and Y percent? Did I ask my question clearly?
Well, I think it's, it's, it's always gonna be a range.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so you're, you can go, like he says, up to or down ten percent.
Okay.
If you, if you choose it to be ten.
Okay, so then that means, you know, District one might have a, a five percent variance, just picking that hypothetically, and District two might have a six percent variance, as long as it's within that range.
Right.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
So I, I guess I'm, I'm back to our timeline. And if our attorney is advising that some discussion or a reading of some sort needs to start in December. For us to meet our deadline of February the eighth, and I also have in my notes that we have to. Get the public involved in all of this as well. Um, I, I'm back to, you know, I think that we, we probably need to set forth. A timeline for council mi- members to meet with Ms. Etheridge, as well as a timeline for us as council. To, to look at, okay, we're gonna, our goal is, you gotta have everybody met, um met with Ms. Etheridge by this date. Um, we got it on the agenda for December the third for the first reading, public hearings, all those things, I, I would like to see it to be a little more specific. And to that, I'm not certain that if, even if we start in December and we stay true to not meeting uh formally in January. I, I don't know that we'll make our deadline, um and, and I don't know what I, the rules say about meeting in January, but you know. If, if it's possible, I think that we probably need to do that as this is a unique year for us.
Questions? Go ahead.
All right, so going back to Ms. Barron, if we're looking at the timeline, so we need to have our first reading. By someone proposed December, what was it, seventh or twelfth? December the thirteenth, the first reading. So at the first reading, we're going to present just a draft at that first reading. So what would the first reading entail, yeah? It, it would be basically.
It, it, it would, it would be. Draft, uh. I can read it. Up again, but you gotta have something. You got to have something, you got to have something to get public input from. So you got to at least have a draft. Or there are times when you might have, you might have more than one map, you know, to get public input from.
Okay, this is directed at attorney. What is the least amount of information we can put in there for the first reading? That will provide us more time to review the information and, and with Ms. Etheridge. I know we need to get that first reading in. So what do we have to have as a part of that first reading? What type of decisions we need to make for that first reading?
You have to have something that, like some maps or something that works or, or potentially works. And it can be changed. So it's, it's not set in stone in the first reading. The first reading is just, is like a first draft of a paper where this is what we, we know we need these things. But we can change it a, a pretty good bit, actually. But, but it has to be done by a certain time.
So if we do the first reading, then that gives us enough time to work to make what other major changes we need. But at least that takes us along the timeline that we're trying to reach.
And my suggestion is, and I think you can, you can start that with, with, because Mrs. Etheridge can do it, if she had to, she can do it both ways, with prison numbers and without prison numbers and so forth. Because she's already done it with prison numbers. Some, you know, she has numbers with, with, you know, with, with, at the prison number. But my suggestion would be for, and my biggest concern is for council members to be more, more aware of their districts and what needs to happen, what are the options for them, as, 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 at least as an individual. Here's, here's, here's the things that are likely to happen that's going, that's going to affect my district. And here's what I think about these things. And if, and if you want, if you want to, from, from all that feedback, if Etheridge could draw you a map or two to say, here's, here's what it would look like with every council member. And then council can, can, can discuss those and decide, you know, which, which one will do our first reading or, or, for further discussion and debate. But the process can have to work somewhat, somewhat like that, because it's not going to be possible for everybody to get in there and she put in a map everything everybody wants. Our suggestion is that we set up something, I work with the court, we set up something with some times and, and council members sign up for some times and just simply meet with GIS to just simply understand the process. Hopefully, we can come up with a resemblance of a map or two by, for us to look at in, in, in a meeting to, for first reading.
Mr. Chair, can, can Ms. Etheridge's information be provided to us?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, if I may respond.
Yes, sir.
I know the council, you probably get a lot of emails. I did send an email out with the benchmark report and her information. I can rescind it, no problem. But yes, it does contain her email address and her office numbers in that email. And, Mr. Chair, for members of council who are not aware, I know Ms. Etheridge, we do not want to take liberties, but Ms. Etheridge has prepared some maps. So when you go and meet with her, you will have an opportunity to see what things can look like. But we want to be clear that we were not making decisions on behalf of council members. But she has taken the information and does have some sample opportunities for you to review, kind of like A and B. So again, to Mr. Livingston's point, I think it would be very helpful for you just to get in and see the product and see how, how maneuverable it is, so that you don't have to be so, it's not going to be overwhelming. But it will be crucial for you to, to meet with Ms. Etheridge to do so, please.
We'll set up some schedule, time, some time, and through the court's office, I'll get with Etheridge and Mr. Brown and send it out to everybody, so.
Y'all miss me? Mr.-
Of course.
Mr. Livingston. Do we need this information right here? Do we need this information now? Are we going to just look at the information that Ms. Etheridge has?
Well, well, the data is the same.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I don't want this information to confuse me with what you're having, because some of, you know, the goals may, all, some of this will change, may change. I like it just.
Number of folks in the district and the, and the racial percentage, all those kind of, in, in the current district, it, it's, it's the same. And, and the new numbers, so, so this is the same as, as just general state information here.
Not if we didn't put in the prison population.
Right.
Not, that's why I'm saying-
This has a prison population.
Okay, this does, no, this does not.
The benchmark does not.
No, the D-
This information, no, this does not have, that's why I'm saying a lot of this will, will change. So I'm going back and forth, but Ms. Etheridge, I'm going to depend on you. And thank you for the work that you're doing with it.
All right, thank you.
But I just thought it was important for us to do this work as quick as possible to get us going and making sure you get what you need.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
I can't.
Other questions?
All right, Brown, anything else? Mr. Wright?